We'll let IT start recording and FCTV, too. All right. Good evening and welcome to the March 25th meeting of the zoning board of appeals here at Zune Town Hall. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, this meeting, this public meeting of the Falmouth zoning board of appeals is physically closed to the public in order to avoid group congregation. There are alternative public access measures in place. The meeting is being televised via Falmouth Community Television. And real time public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application allows viewers to view the meeting in real time and also to send a comment or question to the chair. For the Zoom login instructions, you can go to www.falmouthma.gov/zba. And from there, there's a link that allows you access to the Zoom app. I'll introduce the board at this time. My name is TJ Hury. I'm the chair of the board. Ken Foreman is the board's vice chair. Bob Dugan is the board's clerk. Scott Solinsky is a full voting member. Ed Kiran is a full voting member as well, and James Morris is an associate member. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, Ashley DeMello, who is the recording secretary for the night. And Justin Shanahan is with us from the Falmouth IT department. And of course, we have our friends who I can't see, but they're at FCTV helping us stream live. And thank you, everyone. The Falmouth zoning board of appeals is charged with applying zoning bylaws for the town. And we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws, which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and also from the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of a project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the files, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. And time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should only be directed at the project itself, and we ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor or an opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. And for public comment, again, the public can access the Zoom app at www.falmouthma.gov/zba. There is that link there within that webpage, and it should start the Zoom app for you at the appropriate times of the night during the separate applications. We will open it up to public comment. And we ask you to please click the raised hand icon within the Zoom app. And once you are elevated, we ask you to please state your name and address for the record, along with any question, comment, or concern that you may have. And we typically limit public comment to two minutes per person. The board will then either close or continue the hearing when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision. By motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. And the alternative, the board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to deny or approve would be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three to two vote, would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to our agenda for the night, we have public comment followed by two continuations, two new public hearings, and a few items on our open meeting list. So first up for tonight is public comment. This public comment period is meant for anything not on the agenda. So if anyone is out there with anything to say with something that's not on the agenda, go ahead and click the raised hand icon, and we will elevate you in a moment. And once again, if you're wanting to provide public comment for something else that is on our agenda, just wait until the appropriate time in the evening. Okay, not seeing anyone for public comment. Moving along to our continuations, up first, we have application 36-20 Wings Pond LLC, 63 North Falmouth Highway in North Falmouth. It's a request for a comprehensive permit to construct six duplex buildings totaling 12 units. Three units will be affordable. Voting numbers on this project are myself, Ken Foreman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Solinsky. And the applicant's representative is Mr. Maroni. If he could be elevated, I'm not having checked the attendees list, but I assume he's there. Looks like we have two Nick Maronis. All right, Mr. Maroni, we did elevate you, so you're muted. And your video is off, so you'll have to turn both of those on.
How's that?
Looks good, Mr. Maroni. How are you?
Thank you.
We are getting a little bit of feedback, so that might be, since we do see your name twice, do you have a second? Do you have a second piece of technology that's open with Zoom?
I do.
All right, you'll have to either turn that off or mute it entirely.
Okay. There we go. I turned one of them off. Thank you.
All right, sounds like we have you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members board, you can hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, we're still trying to work out the details with the Conservation Commission regarding our setback from the Vernal Pool. And we're very close. We received an email from them the other day, but we've got to revise our plans accordingly, so we wouldn't have had them ready for tonight. So we're asking to continue to the next available time.
Okay, so just as a matter of housekeeping, Bob, can you read Mr. Maroni's email to the record, please?
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, these are the updates we have. So on March 15th, there was an email received from Mr. Maroni to the administrator. It says, "Hi, Noreen. We will not be ready for the 25 March 2021 ZBA hearing. We would like to continue until 22nd of April 2021 or the soonest available after that. Just so the board is aware, because the applicant is not ready this evening and had sent that email, we did have to excuse our peer engineer from the hearing because the information wasn't available. It will require consent from the applicant to continue the hearing. The soonest date that we have available would be May 13th. So the applicant would need to consent this evening to an extension to May 13th, 2021, and also sign an extension. We also have no record in the file of any application for the demo permit for the garage structures, the buildings that were removed. And we do need that information, so we may want to have the applicant update us on what the status of that.
I'd be happy to, yes. I have the application for the demo permit sitting on my desk, just waiting for the owner to come by and sign it. And I would be happy to sign an extension, whatever Noreen emails to us for time that's needed that we've cost the board on this.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Maroni. So Bob, does that take care of everything?
Yeah, pretty much. So at this point, I would make a motion to continue this hearing to May 13th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan's.
All right, so motion to continue this hearing until, I think, May 13th, 2021. Motion was made by Bob and seconded by Scott. We'll do a roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Scott?
Scott.
And TJ Hury. So it passes unanimously. Mr. Maroni, we will see you back here May 13th for this.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And before we open up the next hearing, if we could please get Mary Berry elevated. Welcome, Mary. All right, she's up. Hi, Mary. All right, so up next, we have application 55-20 RLBE LLC, Rebecca Ann Lane Law 2 in East Falmouth, requesting a comprehensive permit to construct five duplex buildings totaling 10 units, three of which would be affordable. The voting numbers on this project are myself, Ken Foreman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Solinsky. And once again, for the applicant, we have Mr. Maroni. Did we lose him?
Mr. Chairman, you'll also want to elevate our peer engineer, which is Adele Shaheen from Green International.
Thank you. So if we could go ahead and elevate Adele Shaheen, sorry. And where did Mr. Maroni go?
I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Sorry about that.
Yes, and could you also elevate Mike Porcelli, please?
Sure, if he's with us, if he could be elevated, please. All right. Getting's all here. Fantastic. Mr. Maroni, go right ahead.
Okay, for the record, Nick Marioni and Mike Porcelli for the applicants. And to update you on where we stand from the last meeting, we took the peer review consultants' comments. We revised the application to address them. We revised the drawings to address the comments made except for drainage calculations. Those we're still working on, and tonight we're prepared to discuss everything except drainage calculations, which are a whole separate issue. So it's my understanding, and I don't want to speak for the peer review engineer, but it's my understanding from reading the feedback report that came out after we reviewed our comments is that we have addressed the changes they requested on the drawings and the application. However, there are some things that are up to the board to decide on, such as waivers and some of the answers to some of our comments. So I suppose at this point, Adele should give you his report.
Yes, so yeah, that's Adele Shaheen from Green International. We did the peer review. So we did two reviews so far. We did the initial review back in February, and we provided some feedback. And then we got a submission from Nick Maroni on the March 11th, and we further reviewed that submission. And we agree that he's had addressed most of our comments, except for a few things that we just need to plan to be revised to, you know, per his responses. And then also made the list and the to Noreen with all the items that are still open. Some of those items require, you know, conditional approval by the board. And some of them are really, we defer completely to the board for approval. I don't know if you want to go through these items one by one, or we just, you know, think we have sent their list over to the board. I'm not sure if you can go through it. But the other thing is remaining right now for us mostly is the stormwater. We haven't really seen the stormwater plan and calculations. We need to review those before we can complete our review.
All right. Would the board prefer Adele to go through those items, or?
Yes.
All right. So if you could run through those items, please.
Would you, can I share my screen? Because it's the four pages of items.
Sure, if you're able to, go ahead and share your screen.
Sure. Let me know when you see my screen.
All right, we have it.
Yep. So this is our latest, you know, comments that has, you know, you see the color coded here. Everything in blue is recommended conditional approval by the board. Everything that is kind of in pinkish color, red color, that's really, you know, we defer to the board for approval on it. And those are the divided by, you know, we had comments on the application, we have comments on the bylaws, and we have comments on the, you know, chapter 40B, stormwater, and so I can go to the open items if you like. I mean, the ones that are in white are the items that we just responded to, but they need a follow-up on them. Those are the ones we sent to Nick for his consideration, of course, to address. First one for zoning waivers, again, there's a comment that we had on the, you know, the board mentioned that the town code 172, section, whatever, you know, they were not, you know, they were asking for waivers for them. We just, you know, defer into the town for those. Same thing with the comment on the EDA, MAABB, they asked for a waiver, so again, we defer into the power for accepting those waivers. And then there also was two comments regarding the, you know, to be considered board for conditional approval, which is, you know, we can show the water and gas connection for each unit. You know, I guess, I know the gas would not be available, they'd have to buy the gas company, so we understand that. The electric, the same way. I'm sure the plans will come through at some point when you're doing the design. And moving forward, there's also a waiver request for the minimum lot dimensions. And there's also, you know, for proposing two municipal units in any district. So there's another requirement for in the zoning bylaw that, again, we're referring to the town. Move along that. Reduce removal of the trees when four inches trunk diameter larger, there's trees, as many trees with that in the parcel. Again, that probably requires some waiver and submit a waiver for it. Moving on to the application for the chapter 40B, they had some, and we commented on the plan sheet, and sheet 62, there's a layout plan requires existing and proposed utilities. I said, we saw, we see no plans for that for telecom. The response was, are we going to add it? But again, we have views, but there's nothing on other utilities. For example, electric and telecom and all of that. Nick is working with utility companies, and those, at some point, they're going to give them something. Are they going to make the connections? So we recommend, again, approval, you know, conditional approval by the board that this should be submitted at some point. There's also a comment on, the existing condition plan was missing some utility, existing utility information. And then the response was showing the catch bases and gas locations. Again, there's some, still some missing information on the plan. We defer again, if the board is okay with approving that, you know, we just defer to the board for that. The section about the stormwater, we don't really have anything yet. These are initial comments. There's no responses yet. So we'll have to see if the new submission that they're going to give us is going to address those or not, so. So that's to be continued. Again, zoning board of peer review, we also had the comment on the drainage. They responded to that. I think we responded, they should know your technical and specific information. They referred us to the groundwater, you know, the information they have for the molting, which I think this was done for the septic system. But we just need some information on that one. So that's still an open item. Moving forward to the wastewater disposal system, again, we had a comment on the, again, the site is within 2,000 feet of the stabilization area zone. And we're asking for a waiver from the town, and the thing, the site is about 1,000 feet away. But it's within the 2,000 feet requirement, so we asked for a waiver on that and refer to the board on this request. And these are really just these, some follow-up comments on the septic system and the tank, you know, the 2,000 tank, you know, should be provided minimum three manholes. They show, yeah, they show three, but the plan still has the old number, so we're just looking for the plan revision on those. There's nothing major here, you know, we just really just need to, they said they're going to do it, but the plan still doesn't have it, does not have it. And further, you know, these are new comments in the submission we got on this March 13th. So we made some comments. Again, most of these comments are on the plans. I make, we gave it to Nick, but we expect that to be addressed hopefully in the next round, provide responses to them. Again, the town requires five feet separation between proposed utilities. The plan, I mean, so the town requirements, but the plant company doesn't make sure that's requirement. We just ask that they meet that. Again, the plumbing plans for individual unit water services interests are coordinated with the with this plan, so we just want to make sure that this have coordinated. Water service installation detail, you know, to have a trace wire, so that's something, again, we just went back to the towns, you know, town, town standards. We want to make sure they adhere to the town standards for utilities and so forth. And that's pretty much just the summary of the comments. As I said, we didn't see anything major, just really just meeting the town requirements. But there's many of those, as I said, you know, we make a recommendation for the board to consider the conditional approval. And also, we defer to completed the board. Does anybody have any specific question that I should go over more details on?
Sure, we can see if anyone has any more detailed questions for you. Let's see, Bob, do you have anything?
Just a quick thing for clarification, because I don't know if it's a typo. So on the color key that's pink, it says the comment is deferred to the planning board. Is that supposed to say zoning board, or is he saying that we should get comments from the planning board?
I'm sorry, that should be the zoning board.
Okay. No, I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Scott, anything?
Not at this time.
All right, let's see, who do I have next? Ken, anything?
No, I still need to assimilate some of this.
Sure. Ed?
Not at this time.
All right, Mary?
Yeah, I don't have any comments at this time or questions.
Very good. James, did I ask you yet?
No, you did not, but I have no questions this time.
Gets a little tough when I don't have the normal Brady Bunch squares to go off of. All right. Thank you very much for your presentation.
No problem. If you guys have any questions, you have the files, just feel free to reach out to us if you have any questions.
Absolutely, we appreciate it.
No problem.
All right, would the board like to question the applicant about anything? Why don't we do that? Ed, anything? You're shaking your head now. Nothing for you?
No.
All right. James, anything?
No, thank you.
Nope. All right, Bob?
I just, I guess just quickly, so there were comments originally about about changing possibly access points to the project. Is that something that you decided to look at or can't look at, or?
We've looked at it a few times. We think this is the best we can do. We think it's the best way to lay out the site. And you notice also that we moved building five on this version of the plan, we moved building five further to the right to improve the, some comments from previous sets of drawings that surrounded, easily getting in and out of parking spaces in front of building five, between four and five before. We also moved four and five, three and, three and four. We split them apart further so we could fit the handicap space in between that and the guest parking there. So we've been making improvements to the site plan, but we still think that entrance works the best for us.
That's all I have to know.
All right, thank you, Bob. Scott, anything?
No, no, sir.
Very good. Ken? Still muted, Ken.
I know, I was having trouble getting my cursor on the mute button. All that to say, no, not yet. Sorry, but I, like I said, I gotta think about this more.
Understood. Mary, anything?
Not at this time.
All right. And Mr. Maroni, you had a legal opinion from, I think it was Attorney Clower regarding merger?
Yes.
All right. And everything seems to check out there?
It did.
All right. And regarding the fee in the road, I think you said at a previous hearing that Mr. Drooly owns the fee in the road. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so does the applicant as the property owner, does he have the right to pass and repass Rebecca Ann Lane?
He had the right to pass and repass for a single-family house lot, and we obtained permission from Mr. Drooly to expand that use to this plan, the 10 units.
Okay, and that agreement's on the file somewhere?
To the initial application, I believe.
Okay, it's been a while since I looked at it, so I wasn't.
It's attached to the initial application, yes.
Okay. All right, any other follow-up questions from the board? All right, we will turn it to public comment if there is any question, comment, or concern regarding this project for members of the public. Go ahead and click the raised hand icon utilizing the Zoom app, and we will get you elevated in a minute. All right, anyone out there, members of the public, go ahead and click the raised hand icon if you have any public comment tonight. All right, anyone out there, members of the public, go ahead and click the raised hand icon if you have any public comment tonight. All right, I'm not seeing anyone. Back to the board, any other follow up questions of any kind?
Just a quick question for Mr. Marioni. Do you just offhand know where that? Information is on the fee in the road in the application? Do you have any idea what page it's on?
I, I, I don't without opening the application, looking at it, but I will. And I'll do that now. You want me to do it before we close this meeting tonight or?
No, no, I just try to find it here. If you had one, I'd reference it, but we can just look at it after the meeting.
I'll, I'll email it separately to Noreen tomorrow and she can get it to you if you like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Handle it that way. Okay.
Yeah, it's a little easier. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, anything else from the board? All right, not seeing anything. I know that Ken and a few others indicated that we need some time to review the, the peer review and I guess we're. Working on the drainage calculations as well.
We are.
All right.
So one question, I, I would ask one, them to comment on one question on one of the peer review comments, which pertains to the. Coastal pond overlay and the possibility of installing a. De-nitrifying wastewater treatment system.
Who's the question to?
Whoever feels they can answer it best. No, why can't we do that?
Well, the cost for one thing. And the requirements don't even, it's under five acres.
And you, well, or more than. Five lots.
That's really one lot though. We went through this on 213 North Falmouth Highway and you put that out to peer review. And the peer review consultant came back with a report that. I forget the numbers, but it was an outrageous cost to the development and we granted a waiver on that.
I, I remember that and, but I think these systems are getting cheaper. And. Was raised by the peer, peer review engineer here.
I'm not sure, I, I'd like to hear his comment on raised by it's. He pointed out that we requested a waiver from it. I'm not sure he. Said much more beyond that.
Well, the justification for seeking the waiver is always a financial. Hardship and I just wonder if once again, if we could get an estimate of what it would cost to add it.
You want the estimate from me or?
I think we should get a professionally prepared estimate.
I agree, Ken. How's everyone else feel about that?
Agreed.
It makes sense.
All right, and our, our own pure engineer review, I don't, I don't know if you had any comment on the, on the de-nitrification system?
Well, we know that it was required by the town, but we also realized he submitted a. A waiver request for it, you know, it is within 2,000 feet. It's about 1,000 feet away from that zone. So. According to the law, I mean, to your bylaws, yeah, I mean, he, he needs to do it, but I understand that he submitted. Waiver for, because of the cost justification.
Right, I'm just saying that the, the argument for cost justification is that it makes it uneconomic and. I think we need to actually justify that by saying, you know, how much would it cost and how much would it reduce the profit?
All right, especially if they're asking a waiver for it and if the, the issue is cost, I definitely want something in the file for, for evidence of that. All right, anything else from the board? All right, so I think we're looking for a continuation here. So.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we talked about mechanics of getting that justification for the cost.
I'm sorry, Mr. Maroni, if you could say that again, you came in a little choppy.
We just said we were going to. Get some justification for the cost, but we didn't talk about the mechanics of how we were going to do that.
I see.
I think we can request that. That we get. Outside. Input from a consultant.
So is that what you're going to do? You're going to instruct Noreen to do that or?
I would be happy to do that.
Sure, I think that would be wise.
And also is there any chance we can talk about, I guess what we're, we're hoping to accomplish tonight was to reduce the focus of all these points. To try and get through some, so at the next meeting, we're focused on the things that are open. One, of course, being that waiver we just talked about. Are there any other waivers the board's concerned about? That we can move off the table and off the list tonight? And reduce this peer review. Down to something manageable, we can get through at the next meeting if possible.
I mean, I, I for one would need time to review, especially since tonight was the first night that we had our peer review to, to introduce us to everything. I would need time to look everything over. In order to get to that point and narrowing everything down.
Okay, just asking.
Understood. All right, so I know we, we are looking for a continuation. Noreen, do we have a possible date in mind?
So we would be looking at May 13th.
Okay. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Make a motion to extend. May 13th.
Thank you, Ed. Is there a second?
Can I ask one, one other? So at that time, will, will, will they have the drainage stuff resolved? Because then we could take everything up all at once.
That's my anticipation, yeah.
So I just had a quick question for the administrator. So did you say, did you say May 13th?
Yes.
In that case, I'll, I'll second it.
So we just, I just have a question. We just. Continued the other 40B, didn't we, to May 13th?
Yes, so it would be just the two of those for that evening.
All right, so Ken, I think you made that motion, right?
No, I seconded it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ed made it.
Ed made it.
Ed made it, you seconded. All right, roll call vote, Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
Scott?
Scott Sluski, I.
And TJ Hury, I. So the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. We will see you back here 5:13.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, that does it for our continuations. Moving on to our new public hearings, we have application 11-21 Graham, 31 Hamilton Street and T-Ticket. Requesting a special permit to construct a second floor addition. And I believe we have the applicant himself, Robert Graham, if he could be elevated. All right, Mr. Graham, we have you elevated. You just have to unmute yourself and turn on your video.
Here we go.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So first, we just need to read everything into the record and you can give a presentation and we'll go from there.
Okay.
So application 11-21. Robert L. Graham, 601 Alder Street, Uxbridge, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-3C of the Code of Falmouth. To construct a second floor addition to the single family dwelling on subject property known as 31 Hamilton Street, T-Ticket, Mass. For referrals, speculative from engineering said the plan looks good. Drywells have been added to the plan. Conservation Commission recently approved the reference project under an RDA on 22421. And the plan of reference is attached and that plan is dated 7/16/2019. Additional comments from engineering. Application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Hamilton Street is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters of public rights of way. Four, had to do with the drywells, which we already mentioned. It also recommend the following, upon completion of construction. The applicant shall post the address for this residence per section 991. A fixing of legible numbers required in time limit for compliance. Planning, no comment. Assessors, this includes lots 103 and 104. Water department. The existing home is fed from a 12 inch main in Merivis to have any two inch in Hamilton Street. The existing service is estimated to be a three quarter based on the installation date. The main and service need to be shown on the plans for the record. And the service should be upgraded to a one inch if demand increases due to the addition. From health department, the property is on town sewer and they refer to the wastewater division for any comments. Fire department has no issues with the project is drawn. There is one letter of support to whom it may concern. We write to you in reference to application 11-21, Robert L. Graham, 31 Hamilton Street, T-Ticket, Mass. On his application for a special permit to construct a second floor addition to a single family dwelling. As his immediate neighbor on Hamilton Street, number 29, we fully support Mr. Graham's application. He took the time to show us the drawings, the plans of the proposed second floor addition and he has routinely shared with us his vision for his home. Mr. Graham's design takes into consideration the character of the street and the neighborhood. And the proposed addition will be aesthetically pleasing and consistent with the other nearby homes. We hope the board endorses and approves his application and we look forward to seeing the transformation. And that's respectfully submitted by Patricia Morano and Shannon Riley at 29 Hamilton Street, T-Ticket, Mass.
All right, thank you, Bob. Mr. Graham, feel, feel free to give us a presentation of your project.
Sure. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. As stated, my name is Bob Graham. I'm seeking to add a second floor. To this home, this home was built in the early 50s, one story ranch home. And, and there was a subsequent addition later on for a dining room in the back. I'm only looking to put a second floor on top of the original existing footprint and. And then also cut into the garage roof so I can put in a deck. Off of the, off of the new second floor, which will house a, a new master bedroom, bathroom and a sitting area. The existing roof, roof lines, the, the new addition will be about eight foot six higher. The ridge line will be eight foot six higher than the original ridge line on the original home and. And I purposely had this designed to be in keeping with the scale of the neighborhood. As opposed to, you know, sort of a full second floor and then raising with the roof. I went with a dormer approach, a full dormer approach and. And that was the basis for the design, so.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Anything else? Or we can turn it to board questions if you want.
I don't have anything else. If I miss something, I'm sure you'll ask.
Sure. All right, so we'll turn it to board questions. Ed, anything?
No, I think it looks, it'll boost up the neighborhood a little bit, look nice.
All right. Oh, and if I didn't already mention it, the regular voting members are the voting members on the project. All set, Ed?
Yes.
Sorry, James, anything?
No questions, thank you.
All right, Bob?
No questions immediately, but I just wanted to also mention that the applicant did submit a FEMA worksheet to the file. Showing that meets the 50%. Mr. Graham, has that been submitted to the building department yet?
Yes, it has.
Did they require the, on the copy we have, it doesn't have any contractors signing on any of the figures. Is that something they require?
No, they didn't because I'm an architect also and they said, because I'm an architect, I could sign off on it.
Okay, that was my only question.
All right, thank you, Bob. Ken, anything?
Just, just for the record. No expansion of footprint lot coverage.
Correct.
And then I guess you also certified in the file that the foundation was adequate to support. What was that based on? Well, how do you?
That was based on, I dug a hole in the outside down to the bottom to verify the outside of the footing and then on the inside. I chipped away, I did a couple of core drills and then I chipped away to check where the footing was on the inside of the foundation. The foundation is an eight inch block wall, sitting on approximately a 20, 20 inch wide footing. And then I measured down, grabbed a hook and I got a depth of about nine and a half inches.
And there's never any concern with the, the block itself being adequate to support the.
No, no concern.
Extra weight?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ken. Scott?
Yeah, there's a shed on the property? Yes, there is. It's 109 square feet? I, yeah, I think so. I only know it by its dimensions, not its area. All right, then it's right on the property line? Yes, right. Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Scott. Mary, anything?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you, Mary. So, Mr. Graham, in addition to the law coverage. Remaining the same, your, your side and front yard setbacks, all, all the dimensions are remaining the same as well?
Yes.
All right. All right, and my other concerns have already been addressed. So we will turn it to public comment. If there's any question, comment or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon. Using the Zoom app and we will elevate you in a moment. All right, not seeing anyone out there. So back to the board and Ken, did you have, it looked like you were moving for something. Did you have any?
Yeah, I did. I was, it was, so just a very, again, you're on sewer at this time?
Yes, I am.
And it, but there is a change in bedroom count or is it the same?
I know there is a change in bedroom count. So the existing, the existing home is two bedrooms, this will be a third bedroom.
Okay, and, and on sewer, you're entitled up to four, I think.
That's right.
All right. Anything else from the board?
So I'd only make a comment just because it's a concrete block foundation that on all the other concrete block foundations that we've dealt with. We have always required a certified engineer's letter that it will carry the second floor. We've done this pretty consistently with anything that's been. In these flood plans. I understand that the owner is an architect, but.
Yeah, I, I had spoken with the building department about that and they did tell me that as, as an architect, I can be the one that stamped it. That's why I, I prepared the letter and stamped it.
Okay. Anything else from the board? All right. Is there a motion?
Move to close.
All right, thank you, Ken. Is there a second? All right, motion closed made by Ken and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ken? Ken?
And Formanai.
Scott?
Scottzalenski.
And TJ Hurry. So it passes unanimously. The hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
I've moved to approve with conditions, I guess.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. All right. So motion to approve with conditions made by Ken and seconded by Ed. Want to start us off with findings, Ken?
Sure. So the applicant is adding a second floor and increasing bedroom count by one to three bedrooms from two. The elevation increase is, I guess, by testimony, eight feet, eight feet some and change, I think, over.
Mm hmm.
Eight foot six.
Eight foot six?
Eight foot six, right. Over the existing, still well below that, any height limits.
Adding drywells, Ken?
We're not at conditions yet. I just, I think we should also note in the findings that we, they did, they submitted the FEMA reg FEMA calculations that the cost of the improvements is less than fifty percent of the cost of the structure. And that we have a letter from an architect who happens to also be the owner, but nonetheless, a legitimate source who says that the foundation is adequate to support the extra load.
Mr. Chairman, do you have to put in in the findings that through testimony, he was granted permission for the engineering aspects of it by the by the building commissioner?
Sure. I think that's important, especially since we usually look for a certified engineer.
Yeah, I would I would just put in there that the building commissioner allowed Mr. Graham as a registered architect to submit his own letter showing the suitability, how to second floor to carry the load and also to sign the FEMA application according to what the cost would be without having that signed by any of the workmen that they usually require on cost estimates.
All right. Anything else for findings?
Two forty dash three.
Sorry, go ahead, Bob.
You want to put in two forty dash three C, two forty dash two sixteen. You want to make sure that you state that it's on the 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 Falmouth Heights sewer system. And it is connected.
Law coverage and setbacks remaining the same?
Yeah. You want to put a finding that they did revise the plans to show the drywells that were requested by the engineers. You want to put a finding as they did go before conservation for that RDA and was approved under the date that they listed, which was the plan from July ninth. Where the plan was revised, I don't think they need to do anything at that point, but we probably have to send them an updated plan so they know that our plan dates different on the revisions.
Sure.
Okay. And then are we at conditions?
If you'd like to be, go ahead, Ken.
But I guess as per plan, and if the plans have been revised to show the drywells, then I guess we're set. Anything, Robert?
Yeah, the only other condition would be you want to list the section ninety nine one of a fixing of legible numbers. No, I mean, I don't know how to write this because it was it was more of a suggestion if they needed, but the water department commented that it changes in service if the increased usage in the house needed it. So I don't know how you put that. Do you just want to put that they review with the water department if the service needs an upgrade?
So typically what I would put in is recommend that the applicant get a sign off from the water department. So typically they would go by there and have a conversation and, you know, it would be up to the water department to determine if they need the upgrade.
Yes, sir.
Ken, I know I said it was okay to go on to conditions, but I just thought of something with findings being within the sewer district. They're asking, or they're going from two to three beds, but I think they're allowed up to four.
Right.
If we could just note that.
Yeah.
Sorry, Ken. And Scott, I think you were gonna say something. Sorry.
Are we just gonna, are we gonna add the the normal building, construction times and days?
It is a pretty crowded neighborhood.
It is.
Contain all all building materials on site while we're doing it?
And and I know applicant didn't have any plans to do so, but you should probably also put in there that there'll be no habitable space in the basement since they keep in the basement.
Right. Yeah.
All right. Anything else for conditions? All right. Last call for anything, findings or conditions? All right, seeing none. So that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Ken and seconded by Ed. Do a roll call vote. Ed?
Thank you, Renai.
Thank you, Ed. Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Thank you, Bob. Ken?
And Formanai.
Thank you, Ken. Scott?
Scottzalenski.
Thank you, Scott. And TJ Hurry. So the motion to approve with conditions passes unanimously. Mr. Graham, congratulations and good luck on your project.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good night, Evan.
Good night. Okay, up next, we have application nine dash twenty one. Falmouth Boat Storage LLC, five fifty East Falmouth Highway in East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct a metal building for the use of boat storage. And for the applicant, we have attorney Paul Glenn. So if he could be elevated. And Bob, whenever you're ready, go ahead and read it into the record.
So application number zero zero nine dash twenty one, Falmouth Boat Storage LLC, Newton, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three, two forty dash fifty four, two forty dash fifty five, two forty dash fifty seven E and two forty dash one oh seven of the Code of Falmouth to construct a metal building for the use of boat storage on subject property known as five fifty East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth, Mass. Engineering department reviewed the drainage calculations filed under the cover lever from Homes McGrath dated March ninth, twenty twenty one with reference pending application proposed building and storage. Lot five fifty East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth, Mass. Our job number is two one nine zero eight one. The calculations show that the system is capable of mitigating for the town's design storm as required. The engineering division reviewed the document stormwater management report proposed building and storage lot for the above referenced project dated May twentieth, twenty twenty by Homes McGrath. The submitted calculations do not meet. All right. So the so the one that I just read is the revised that originally did not need it. So they they did go over and revise it. From engineering, again, the application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. East Falmouth Highway is a state right of way in the area. Any alterations within the right of way would require permission from Mass DOT. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or rights of way. There are three proposed parking spaces, one of which is designated accessible. It is not clear what this is based on. Section two forty one oh nine, parking area design and location B requires all parking areas to be paved. Unless a special permit is granted, what material will these spaces be? Will this conform to accessibility requirements? We defer to the building commissioner as to the required number of spaces for this use and if accessibility requirements are met, we defer to the board if the materials and location requirements are met. And we defer to the board for the reduction in required spaces. Four, an erosion and sediment control plan is not included in the application. Some of the typical information is shown on the plans, but not enough to meet all requirements. But the project will not be subject to a street opening permit or driveway permit. With the engineering division, we request that erosion and sediment controls are included for this project to protect the abutting properties and resource areas. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls as described in the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. We also recommend the following in any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the attached soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions, which can be found at the engineering division's page on the town website. References to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the zoning board of appeals, who is the permitting authority for this project. Five, there are two retaining walls shown in the plan, but no details. One appears to be approximately four feet high. The other is much as ten feet high. Neither wall is near abutting properties. Inconstructibility does not appear to be a concern for either. We defer to the board if additional information should be provided into the building commissioner if a building permit is required for either. Six, there are three structures shown as dash lines and labeled house along with a hatch structure representing the car dealership. The only address in our system is five fifty, which is in the use for the car dealership. It appears the two front houses are using five forty two and five forty four. And we don't have any information for the rear house. Due to the mixed use and taking into account the existing nonconformance with the current address standards, we propose the following. The existing front two houses houses will remain five forty two and five forty four. These addresses must be posted on a sign at the entrance of East Falmouth Highway. Is there an address in use for the rear house? If there is, it will remain. If there isn't, it will be issued five forty six or five forty eight. This address must also be posted out at East Falmouth Highway. The car dealership will remain five fifty and be designated building one. It should be added to the existing business sign or new sign out at the East Falmouth Highway. The proposed building will be issued five fifty East Falmouth Highway, building two. It should be posted on a sign at the entrance of East Falmouth Highway. Additional signage should be added on the site directing to the rear two buildings. All existing and new address postings and signs should be reviewed and approved by the Falmouth Fire Rescue prior to issuance of any occupancy permit. The DPW Engineering Division will issue the addresses when the applicant comes in for sign off of the building permit. We request the following condition in any approval. The applicant shall see the DPW Engineering Division for address assignment prior to approval of a building permit. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for the building per section ninety nine one and fixing of legible numbers required in time limit for compliance. Prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, Falmouth Fire Rescue shall inspect and approve the address posting and address signage on the site. From Concom, the project appears to fall outside of conservation jurisdiction. From the planning department, during the staff review of this application for Falmouth Boat Storage LLC site plan review at five fifty East Falmouth Highway, we conferred with both the building commissioner and town council. It was the consensus of the group that per the Falmouth zoning bylaws, boat storage in quotations is not a lot in allowed use in the light industrial district, either by right or by special permit. Section two forty fifty five, other permitted principal uses B says marinas, landing and wharves for party boats not exceeding thirty three feet in length at the waterline, renting of rowboats, sailboats, motorboats and fishing tackle, retail sale of fish bait, marine rail railways, boat building repairs and storage. The bylaw per section two forty fifty five does allow for marinas as permitted principal use, but it is our understanding the applicant is proposing to use this as interior and exterior commercial boat storage and not as a marina. The applicant came before the planning board for site plan and may return, but we have not resolved the zoning because planning staff feels the use is not allowed. From water department, the new water connection should tie into Sin Rock Circle and not East Falmouth Highway. This will allow for better flow through Sin Rock Circle and avoid the mass DOT layout. The DPW Water Division can furnish a quote to perform the tie in and extension. This will also allow for future water extension into the remainder of the property. The DPW Water Division may tie in Pires Way as well to improve water flow and quality. The final plan should reflect these changes if approved. Fire department has no issues with the project is drawn. Assessors department has no comment. Health department has no comment. And that's all we have right now.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And the voting members on this project will be the regular voting members. And attorney Glenn, looks like we have you. And is is Mike McGrath part of your team?
Yes, he is.
All right. He he has his hand up. So if we could get him elevated as well, please.
And I think Alex Khan is the applicant. He should be here also.
All right. I see. Let's see. He is in the attendees list. If we could get him elevated as well, please. All right. Looks like everyone's here. Attorney Glenn, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll start at the top before we address particular concerns, if you if you don't mind. It's property about close to twenty two acres near Rocky's Gym, near Falmouth Auto, Eagle Fence, in that neighborhood. And already on this particular site, there are three residential units as it's been pointed out already, and Falmouth Auto Body, Falmouth Route twenty eight auto, they call it, Route twenty eight auto, is right on the same lot. There. And the three home, three homes are on there. So there's more dwell, more than one dwelling per lot. And that would be one of the reasons why we'd have to come to the board of appeals in any case, because it's a preexisting nonconforming use. The particular area where the it circled and it's it's outlined in darker ink there is about eighty thousand square feet. And it's probably a little more than eighty thousand square feet, the remainder of the industrial use. And the public use district is seventeen acres thereabouts with one little house on it. The houses have been there for a long time. So the there are obviously issues to anything, but I would like to, if I could, walk the board through the town and zoning, the town of Falmouth zoning bylaw with regard to light industrial and with regard to boat storage. Okay, I I understand that the the that the staff had a meeting and they spent some time on it, but I think the memo we submitted shows that Alex, the applicant, has done really extensive research along with me to show that boat storage is allowed in light industrial in the town of Falmouth, always has been. And it's really, if you read the bylaws, it's where the town is saying, please put it here. Don't put it in a residential zone. It really says, please put it here. And I submitted to you, I hope you all have it, the town of Falmouth bylaw with regard to allowed uses in the light industrial district.
Yeah, we have it as part of the package, Attorney Glenn.
Everybody have that? Yeah, I wasn't sure. I think most of you have it handy with you. So in residential districts, all the residential districts and in public use district, it does say clearly boat storage is an allowed use. And it gives eight very detailed conditions that you have to meet before you can put something in a residential district. To me, it's suggesting that we really don't want it in a residential district. You can, if you have a site that's perfect, you can have it there. And now you go over to the light industrial district. And they have, if you look at permitted uses, two two forty fifty four F. I think I highlighted part of it. Oh, yeah. Okay. So really, A through E. It'd be hard to call them industrial uses, A through E, you know, retail sales, restaurants, arts and craft. But when you get down F at the beginning, this is real industry, converting, fabricating, manufacturing, altering, about seven different things. But they have a provision and the provision says But they have a provision, and the provision says you have to go through these special hoops if you want to do this heavy industrial use. Then it goes down, the last sentence. Boat yards and buildings they're on and electronic plants and buildings they're on shall be exempt from the provisions of it. Why would you exempt a use from a provision if it wasn't allowed in the application, if it wasn't already allowed? You get down to 240-55. So our application doesn't say we're a marina. And I also submitted a memo. I don't know if you, hopefully you all have that. And part of the memo shows that there is no, there is no marina in town in a light industrial district. Look all around, any water, anywhere in town, look around water, and there's no light industrial district there. So you don't, you don't have to be along the water to have a marina, boat building, repairs, and storage. Why is that there? You know, and we looked at it, I don't know whether you had time to check it or not. We looked at it and we submitted a list that shows, you know, Alex did this himself. He went around and did the research on this. It shows all the locations on it, and we found out with all the locations of boat storage, and you just see that they're all in light industrial. Well, they're in B2, and the B2 language has the exact same language as the light industrial district. Exact verbatim. They have this, it doesn't jump out and say, please have boat storage in light industrial law business too, but it implies it all over the place, and that's where it is. And that's where it has been permitted for a long period of time in there. So that's something to consider. When you, and then I get over to 240-57E. And so this is a special permit, though. You know, I think it's clear that it's an allowed use. And if it isn't allowed use, the town's going to be spending a lot of time doing enforcement actions to shut down really every boat storage place in town. They're just not in, the big ones are not in residential districts, they're not in marina districts, they're in light industrial districts, and they're in the B2 districts. So by special permit, E, any business that you find acceptable and compatible with uses already mentioned. But I don't want to rely on that. I think it's a use allowed by, right as clear as speak. Why would you ever want boat storage in a residential place? And that's, in effect, saying it's not allowed here is in effect saying we want it in a residential district. And of course, that's not it. This site is, this site is perfect. Already towards the bog, pre-existing is a boat storage facility. If you go to the right, to the east of the property shown on the plan, there's an existing boat storage facility. There are marinas all around town that they call themselves marinas, but they're not by the water. There's just no requirement that that be. There's car storage in effect in front of this use on Route 28 Auto. And the back 17 acres really is something that has a lot of potential that, you know, is pretty much unspoiled, and we want to keep it that way. It might be something that could be used in the future as a park that the town might be interested in. It goes right down to the bog. It's a nice spot. This is in the industrial zone. Why would you want to put it in a public use district? You know, that's public use. And I think they say, well, just put it on the other side of them, take it out of the light industrial and put it in the public use, and it's allowed use. Why would you want to do that? My client doesn't want to do that. I think it's bad planning. It's bad for the town to encroach upon that 17 acres. So I think I went through both the use memo and the town of the bylaws with you. And I hope, I know that you're a quasi judicial board. You can make decisions independent upon, independent from what other opinions might be. You're the first person, you're the first board that would look at this issue. Well, at least since it's been an issue. It's been approved all over town in light industrial zone districts all along, but since it's been, this has been raised as an issue, which was a big surprise to us, you'll be the first, you know, group looking at this. And I hope you look at it right from the beginning and accept that we really study this from a whole town perspective as opposed to just, I don't want it here. Let's find, let's look at the bylaw and interpret it in a way that would support me. You know, so I'll end with that and happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Glenn. So we will turn it to board questions. I'm sorry, Mr. McGrath, how are you?
I'm good. Could I share my, it seems to me that since there was some adverse comments early, I should be able to speak and present. So I would ask permission to share the screen?
Sure. If you, go ahead and do that.
So what I've done here is I have shown you a site plan that shows the proposed metal building, the outside storage, the access. And what I focused on was that this is adjacent to a cranberry bog and adjacent to a flood plain. So we prepared a stormwater management report, and the stormwater management report has been submitted, is designed on a 25-year, 24-hour storm, a 50-year, 24-hour storm, and a 100-year, 24-hour storm. And what we do is we collect it, we collect the water, the water is collected in a swell that comes around, comes over to here, and eventually will flow into these areas. And if it gets exceeded, it will be discharged offsite. Now, there was a comment that said we didn't meet the state's, the town's standards. The town standard is a one-hour, 25-year storm. Excuse me. I designed this for a 24-hour, 100-year storm. So I will tell you that it's more than sufficient to meet the town's standards, and I did submit some calculations to show that. The second thing I did was inside the stormwater management plan that was submitted to the planning board is a whole section called Construction Period Controls. Section 4.1 is an erosion and sedimentation control plan. So I did submit an erosion control plan. And the other point is I submitted also an operation and maintenance plan on how to maintain the drainage structures. This was all discussed at the site plan review. Yes, it may not be a separate document, but it's very clearly inside the stormwater management report that we did. Now, since this is adjacent to wetlands, I didn't use the town standard, I used the state standard, which is more severe. And so I want to assure the board that this drainage design is appropriately designed. We, I want to make sure you understand that this is a proposed gravel surface. It's not pavement. It's a proposed gravel surface. The drainage calculations assume that it's the same as impervious in that the gravel will be, will be basically compacted over time. The other things that I, this is a copy of the stormwater management report that I said was submitted, and I wanted to make sure you know that this is a small portion of a large site. This is an area that's being leased. So the final thing I have to tell you is if you look at the aerial photographs of that's on the town website, there's an enormous amount of boats already being stored here. In fact, there's very significant boat storage all the way around. And so this is just a new application to, and it's more under control than what is being done elsewhere on this land. And I would suggest you, if you go look at the site or look at some of the aerial photographs, you'll see what I mean. But anyways, I believe that the site design is appropriate, and I think that this, and that the, that this project is suitably designed for the, and to mitigate the drainage impacts on site. I'd be happy to answer any questions about my drainage stormwater management report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Attorney Glenn.
Right. So we have, there's the question about the parking. We showed on the plan that we could put 33 spaces there, which Mike has determined would be needed if this was a normal business. And then we have a three, a three-space plan. No one's working there, and it just seems like a waste of space to do that. So that's why, that's why we asked for relief on that issue too, from the parking there. You know, it's just, it's not that type of business. Now, the planning board wanted, this board, to make the decision with regard to use. They said, okay, we're going to indefinitely continue site plan review till we hear from you. I know normally you like to go through site plan review first and then come to you after you have an approved site plan. But so that, you will get a second shot at this because we have to go back and get site plan, you know, see what they say. So plans, we can't take comments and plans will be changed. Perhaps the application will be changed a little bit there. And I'm not sure how quickly the planning board could take this, but I'm hoping we can get a decision on the use of the property, that this is a good use of the property. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Glenn. So if we could, Mr. McGrath, if you could stop sharing your screen, that would be great. Thank you. All right. So we'll turn it to board questions. Ed, any questions?
The drawings that were dated October 29th showed 34 parking spaces along the front of the property. And there were, the drawings dated 15 January, but they're gone. What was on those? Was that for parking for boats or parking for vehicles?
The zoning bylaw has a certain amount of parking spaces for the square footage of a building. So if you divide the space, total space by 300, I think is the number, you're going to come up with 30 something spaces. It was to demonstrate that the spaces could fit if the town decided that the spaces were required. But this is, this entire site's going to be filled up with boats that are stored, and the only people that'll be there is perhaps a watchman and perhaps a mechanic at times that's going to be maintaining the boats. So that's how we come up with three later on.
That's all I have. All right. Thank you, Ed. James, any questions?
No questions at this time. Maybe something may come up or during discussion.
Very good. Thank you, James. Bob?
Mr. McGrath, just for clarification, on the plan, it shows that back parcel is 21 acres, but the deed refers to 45. Is that an error on the deeds?
Hold on.
It's a big error if it is. I just.
The deed refers to 45. Well, Mike did the real plan. I didn't study the title on.
No, it's okay. I'll go with Mike. He says it's 21. I just want to make sure that, because we have two figures in our file, that we know which one, I assume your plan would supersede.
I sensed that at some point there was 45 acres, and maybe there is a deed that says that, but.
That's the, excuse me. Let me see.
Yeah.
That's the exact truth, that the deed that is referenced refers to an original parcel, and since then, they have sold off, you know, the auto dealership, they've sold off the house out front, they sold off two other houses, plus they've done some other conveyances. So the 45 acres was an old number, and we did a perimeter survey, and the current area is, I'm sorry, it's, I have to, it's 21.9 acres. So have I answered your question?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll just reserve the rest of my rights just for when we have discussion. I think we're going to have more of an issue. You know, we can go through a lot of detail, but I think the first thing we have to tackle is, do we feel this is an allowed use or not? If we do, you could go forward with questions if we felt it isn't an allowed use. You know, I don't know where we'd go from there, you know?
Sounds good, Bob.
I think we have to have that discussion first.
Understood. Ken, any questions?
One, are you saying that you feel it is under 240-55B? That pertains to marinas. Are you saying this is a marina?
I am. And in the use memo, it can be a marina. And it's a marina not by the sign you put out front, but by the use. And they list the uses a marina can have in the bylaw. If this was a manufacturing plant and we called it a marina, it wouldn't be a marina. This is, this is effectively a marina, and we're choosing just to have it as boat storage, not all the other uses that a marina can entail.
Okay. So you're arguing that because storage is allowed within marinas and you're requesting storage, this therefore is a marina? Is marina defined under 240-13?
It is. It is, but I'm looking at, if you look at the bylaws, if you look at the map, it does talk about wharves and piers and things, but if you look at the map, we don't have municipality or commercially operated landing and mooring place for yachts and other non-commercial boats. Where you have lots of, you know, you can have other uses, but there's no industrial use along the water. It's like a meaningless definition. The bylaw, the bylaw says that, and don't overlook 54E, where they're excluding from the strict provisions of the other uses.
54F, you mean?
54F, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to come to 54F in my question.
Yep.
I'm not persuaded by your argument for B because I think marinas, 240-55B, because marinas are defined elsewhere, and it doesn't meet that definition. And that's pretty clear.
It would mean that.
But I do, I do think, I do think you have a point under the interpretation of 240-54F. And so just to clarify that, there are limitations under 240-54F, and they are, you can do all these things, but you can't have more than 10,000 square feet of floor area in the building devoted to that use. And you can, and you have to have at least 35 square feet of floor area for each person employed. Is that what you're reading there?
Well, that's.
That's the limitation?
And it says boat yards and buildings they're on are excluded.
Yeah, just let's get to the first part first.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the limitation under, under 240-54F.
Yeah, it says provided that. So these are the provisions. And the last sentence says boat yards are not. And the last sentence says boat yads are not exempt from these provisions.
Yes, I agree with you there.
Yeah.
And it does say that. So, so the interpretation is that you could have a building larger than ten thousand square feet in that case. How large is this building you're proposing?
It's less than ten thousand square feet.
It's nine thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet.
Okay, but if, if you're correct in your interpretation, you could have an eleven thousand square foot building.
Well,
I mean, you could.
Suppose, well, it, you, you could, but you're subject to a, a lot of other regulations.
That, that could be, I'm just saying, understanding the meaning.
That's right.
Of two forty fifty-four.
Why would you exempt somebody, something from a provision if, if it's forbidden?
Right.
You know?
Okay.
I, I think I. I'm hoping you really look at just past practice of Falmouth. I, I mean, the boat, yeah, the, the boat storage is in industrial zones all over town and in B-two zone.
I, I agree, Paul. I just, I'm just saying, if we're going to affirm your position, we have to have a clear argument for the planning board.
Yeah, I don't think the planning board was against it. But I don't think, I don't think they wanted to step on your, what has been your authority, your, your jurisdiction all along, the, meaning the ZBA. I didn't hear anybody say this is bad. They, they did say they'll have a lot of questions about the site plan. I, I think they anticipate getting it back, but I'm not sure. I shouldn't, I'm not, I don't know what was in their mind, but it, it seemed like that, that they were anticipating getting this.
I guess I could ask one other question. So how large will the boats be that are stored in this building? What, what, is there a limit?
Well, you know, I suppose you could put some on it. Mike, can you help me with that? How tall is the building? It is.
Well, I, I think it's more appropriate that the Alex Khan answer that, who is the, the owner of the business.
Sure. Well, Mr. Khan, all you need to do is unmeet yourself and you should be all set.
Great. Thank you very much. To answer that question, the doors to the building are sixteen by sixteen and that's to give plenty of, of, of room. The reality is a boat can't be higher while on a trailer than thirteen feet, six inches, because that's what the law is. And so we're looking at boats between in the building, probably in the, in the mid twenties to low thirties in terms of length. And these are, these are people who, you know, are looking to, looking for a place to keep their boat indoors.
Right. I mean, I asked because again, under two forty fifty-five B for some reason, so it reads marinas landings and wharves for party boats not exceeding thirty-three feet in length at the waterline. I don't know why that limitation is there, but it appears to be. But maybe it only applies to party boats. I guess if you're not, you're not partying, it's okay to have thirty-five foot boat.
You know, we, we should add, Ken, maybe to your point, your question is, this can't be seen from the highway. You know, you, you can't, it's far enough back and, you know, they, they, they're trying to get the boats off the street. There's a demand for it. Alex did some research. He said there's a two thousand boat waiting list to get into the water. So there's like an endless demand. We are a boating community. This land is, it seems made for it.
Is the building going to be heated?
So the plan is to have it heated ideally with solar panels on the roof. And, and that way you keep a constant temperature of, you know, fifty-five to sixty degrees as to way to preserve upholstery and, and the like. So yes, it would be heated. And, and really there is, there is nothing like this in the town and there's a huge demand with people buying these, you know, fancy boats. They don't want it outside, you know, on their front yard. It's a big lawn ornament and shrink wrap. They'd like to have it inside. So that's really where the, the, the idea came from, the concept came from, including, including myself. And, and then the outside would be because I've been contacted by, you know, boat haulers and, and in fact, in marinas as well, looking for a place to store the boats because there's just an overflow and nobody knows.
How many total, total boats do you envision?
So I envision indoors, maybe around thirty, thirty-five. It depends on if you're really good at Tetris, getting them all packed in. And then outdoors, it really depends on doing the final layout with allowing distance for a fire engine to go around the building. And also, as Mike mentioned, the quite large drainage area. So again, and of course you have to be able to get in and out of the building. So maybe well, Bosens is right next to us. They have about seventy-five, so probably around the same.
Is there going to be a hydrant on the site?
There will be hydrant. And I think Mike showed that. I saw a line for it. And it will have sprinklers.
The, the building will.
The building will.
I'm thinking of the outside storage.
The outside storage will have a hydrant that will be coming off of, again, Mike had a drawing of it if he wants to pull it back up.
Okay. I think that's it for me.
Sounds good, Ken. Scott, anything?
Yeah, I have a few. Mr. Glenn, you had made mention of the, the, the boat storage right next door. Do you know if that's a permitted boat storage next door?
I, I don't know enough about it. It's been there. It's just been there. It must be pre-existing non-conforming. It's been there a long time.
So you, you don't know either way?
I know.
Okay.
The boat storage next door has been there since the late seventies. It used to be leased by Edwards Boatyard. And then right in front is the same, around the same time by Little River Boatyard.
All right. I guess this one's from Mike. Mike, how much, how much fill did you import to that site?
Excuse me?
How much fill was imported to that site?
I, I don't know of any fill being imported to the site. I mean, I'm a land surveyor. I go there once. You know, I've been there like five times. I don't know of any fill.
Okay, Mr. Khan then?
Yeah. So as part of preparation, Peter Gavoni, Land Services came in and cleared. The, the reason I did that was this has been a place of unauthorized dumping of landscaping material and, you know, some building materials. So he actually, I spent a lot of money of having him grain by grain, they hauled out all of the, all of the, the unauthorized dumping and, and then kind of, you know, filled it back in. So it wasn't dangerous. And I do have all of the receipts of that, of the number of, you know, containers of of, of yard stumps and things like that hauled out.
Do you have a number of yards imported was my original question, sir?
I don't think there was any yards imported other than a top to, to stabilize the top surface. There was no, there was no, there was no fill brought in. That was the question.
All right. And somebody had mentioned something about it being a leased property. Are you, are you, are you, do you own that property or leasing that property? And you're paying for the building? Is that how that works?
Yeah. So the, the property is, is the whole twenty-one acres, twenty-one point nine acres is owned by my wife's family. And, and so what we did is a ninety-nine year lease on this parcel. And I will be paying, you know, the building is all coming from me. Yeah.
Okay. My final question is, have you already had the building components, a lot of the building components delivered there?
I, I have had building components delivered there because I was trying to do it before the COVID prices went up. And so what I did was I, I locked in and then after a period, they say we can't hold it, we can't hold it. So they had to deliver it. Because it's steel prices.
Rest of my questions. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Mary, anything?
I, I just wanted to add to the discussion that going back to the bylaws, we have a definition of marina in twenty-four, two forty dash thirteen. And that's a municipality or commercially operated landing and mooring place for yachts and other non-commercial boats and vessels consisting of bulkheadings and or finger piers and including facilities for the retail sale of fuel, lubricants, water and ice, shore, telephone and power service. And the disposal of refuge in a manner approved by the Board of Health. So there's the definition.
So that, that's a correct definition. But there is no, there is no marina. There's no, no light industrial site abuts water. So the, the definition of that becomes meaningless. It, 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 it's an allowed use. A marina is an allowed use. It has a different definition in the specific bylaw where it's an allowed use. This is a general definition. But it is, it is allowed. A marina is allowed in the light industrial district and no light industrial district abuts the water. It, it just, it, it just doesn't make sense. It's a meaningless definition. It doesn't apply to this light industrial district.
Okay. So, so I, I read the section in the bylaw, which is what we have to use fortunately or unfortunately. And to me, it doesn't fit the definition. You have an interpret, wait, excuse me. You have an interpretation, but we have marina defined. And we go to the light industrial and I have a different reading of it. And I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah. I, I mean, it, you're.
I mean, I listened, I listened to your argument and I, I hear your argument. But to me in reading this, I don't come to the same conclusion. That's all.
Yeah. So marinas is defined in fifty-five B. It says that it's an allowed use. You know, I, I don't know how many different ways to say it. And I just keep repeating. Falmouth has consistently allowed boat storage in a light industrial zone consistently. There's no, it just, I, I don't know how to explain it.
I, I suppose my question would be, can you show me where those decisions were made by the zoning board of appeals that we, that the zoning board of appeals made those decisions in light industrial?
I, I think they were just allowed by the building commissioner. It was just.
But, but can you bring to the table those examples? I mean, for you to say you have a listing that, you know, I can't go by that.
Well, I provided the list, the, the list there, you know, Alex and I worked in the list. And I provided the locations of all the, all the boatyards in Falmouth. And they're all, they're all listed there by address, light industrial. I, I think everybody just assumed boat storage was an allowed use in the industrial zone until recently, somebody made an issue of it. It just was always just approved by the building commissioner. I, I mean, I don't know how else to.
So I guess my question is, can you show us evidence that the building commissioner approved that as a use? I mean, I'm looking for evidence because all I'm saying to you is, and I'm not arguing that there isn't probably a huge need for this. I'm just saying, as the ZBA, our, our mission, our requirements are, are to go by the bylaws. And unfortunately, my reading of it is that it isn't allowable in that zone. And so I'm just saying to you, if you can bring evidence that the building commissioner has made those determinations, we could look at it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mary. And Attorney Glenn, maybe to Mary's point, and I'll, I'll just try to collect my thoughts here. I, I think this application really comes down to a matter of, you know, statutory interpretation or interpreting the bylaws and, you know, applying some logic as well. So I, I understand your position is two forty fifty-five. Marinas are permitted use within the light industrial district. Correct?
Yeah. I, I mean, it's a different definition than in the definitions, but it specifically says they're allowed.
Although, when you look at the zoning map and you look around Falmouth, there are, there are no light industrial zoned areas on the water because that, that makes sense where a marina should be, right?
Well, i- if you went by the definition that, but there just aren't any. And, and it's an allowed use in the light industrial district.
Right. So where, I guess where, where I get hung up on the project myself is boat storage. So you, you'd agree with me that boat storage is a secondary or incidental use of a marina, right?
Of course.
Right. Okay. Any other follow-up questions from the board?
No, I guess I, I'm in the same situation that, that has been discussed already. And, and as far as the planning boards consider, we haven't heard directly from the board, but we did get a referral from the planning department and, and they were very specific in their referral. They said during their staff review and their, when they conferred with the building commissioner and town council, the consensus was that per the Falmouth zoning bylaws for boat storage is not an allowed use in light industrial, either by right or as a special permit. I don't think we can rely on the fact that this is allowed due to omission. And the issue I have with the exemption out of that item F is exemption, the exemption deals with fabrication. It doesn't deal with storage. It has to do with employee, you know, employees and fabrication. So if you don't meet two forty fifty-four and you don't meet two forty fifty-five and it doesn't meet two forty, you know, fifty-seven, I don't even think it meets the two forty one oh seven for parking reduction, but I don't really think you need a parking reduction. I don't think it's an allowed use. I think people may have used it that way. I don't know a lot about the specifics on light industrial, the marine use, but I do know that there were some zoning changes, especially near some of these harbors to a marine use. And I'm not sure if any of those might have been light industrial. I remember we dealt with those a lot at town meeting, but when you're dealing with marinas, the main thing is you gotta have, you know, you gotta have access to the water. You gotta have piers, you know, you gotta have some kind of a, a wharf situation. I think your best bet is seeing if you can get some kind of an amendment, you know, through town meeting as an allowed use. But from everything that I've seen here, I don't think that we have the authority to give a special permit if we wanted one. We, we have nothing specifically to base it on. And as Mary said, you know, unfortunately, whichever way it goes, we have to base our decisions somewhere in the bylaw. And if I had to base the decision on that one exemption, it doesn't include storage. I couldn't. So I just, I just don't think it meets the definition and unfortunately it's not a marina and you know, I couldn't vote for this as storage.
So this, this would be a pretty significant decision in town to say that boat storage isn't allowed in light industrial areas. It's pretty significant. It would have a major impact. And, you know, town meeting, I, I suppose could make it in bold print like it does in the residential zones. It, does this make sense? You know, the bylaws, bylaws are written by human beings. And the decision, I'm not sure how much time the town plan looked at. I'm not sure if they even looked at my memo on this, whether they looked at the history, whether they looked at the town as a whole. You, you can, if you, if you don't want something, you can find an argument to say it doesn't, it, it's not an allowed use. But I'm, I'm just saying, why wouldn't you want, why aren't you looking for an argument to say light, light industrial is where we want?
But, but the argument you need, you need, Paul, is, is what Mary said. So if you had one of these areas where they're doing boat storage that had something from the building commissioner at the time that said, he's the enforcement officer, I have decided I'm allowing this in this district. I have decided I'm allowing this in this district, or if you had any special permit from, you know, any of the previous boards that said, we gave a special permit. You know, we have, we've got issues all over town that everyone's aware of where people are doing stuff that are in violation. I mean, the property we looked at today even for this, I, you know, from review of the special permit on the front section, that's not complying with the special permit they have there. Things happen over time. But you've got to base it off something unless, unless we have something with some meat to it that you can refer to. But you can't say that I've decided this isn't allow use because it's not specifically listed anywhere. That would open up uses for things all over town. And you can't base the entire decision off of one exemption that doesn't refer to boat storage.
Yeah. And the fact that it's a wharf with a marina, we're calling it a marina.
You know, I think it's a good location too. I think it's off the beaten path and it makes complete sense. The problem is, we have to base our decisions, if we voted for this on something and you, right now, you would have to say that it doesn't meet most of the examples you've given. You couldn't say that it meant, you know, 50, 55, 54. The only thing you could say in a decision is there was a reference of an exemption in, in, you know, in the, I think it's 54, only an item F, yet that exemption doesn't have to do with storage. So.
245-55B, other permitted principal uses? And it says boat buildings, repairs and storage? I, I mean, I, I don't know what can be more clear than that.
Mr. Chairman, could I say something?
Yeah.
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. McGrath.
Under 250, I'm sorry, 240-54, paragraph F, it says boatyards and buildings thereon. And then I'll stop right there. And then what I did is I Googled, what is the definition of boatyard? It says, a boatyard, according to Google, is a place where boats are built, repaired or stored. So my reading of 240-54, since it says boatyards, it's an allowed use. So I would refer you to the Google definition of boatyards, a place where boats are built, repaired or stored. So that's what we're doing.
Well, I understand that, but that's not a definition in our bylaws. They only base it with marinas. And my guess is, is because they wanted boatyards to be related specifically to marinas. So again.
I was taught.
If that's a good, no, but if it's a good definition, and I understand it is, and again, I'm saying it could work here, but you would have to have the definition entered into the bylaws. And you'd have to review some of these areas where, you know, where this is allowed.
Well, I've been around 50 years and what I was always taught that if the zoning bylaw didn't have a definition, then you went to a standard dictionary to see what the definition is. And that's what I did. So I would say to the board, since you haven't defined boatyard in, in your bylaw and it's an allowed use, you could go to the dictionary and if boatyard is a place that's.
Can you? So in that 250-54, where it says at the very top permitted uses, not looking specifically at F, what does it state the permitted uses are?
Well, they're A through G.
No, the permitted uses is the first sentence. It's, those are, those are sub-sections, but if you look at the 54, so the permitted uses are retail sales, household services, restaurant, arts and crafts, professional office use.
Why are you skipping over paragraphs?
Well, no, I'm.
No, I'm not skipping over, I'm telling you right now that you don't meet the marina definition. So you're basing your entire argument on item F of 240-54. That's pretty much what.
No, Bob, I'm not, no, I, I counted, I'm looking down 55, right underneath it, other permitted principal uses. And we have a definite, we have marina is a principal use and it describes the things that are allowed.
No, I understand, but that is specifically using, using the town's definition of marinas that's listed in the bylaw. And so we use B, which is marinas. We have to use the marinas definition that's included in the bylaw.
I don't think you do. Unless you really want to, I don't think you do. Marina is defined right here in the allowed uses. The marina in the general definitions, where you have something specific like marina right here in the allowed uses, you count on what they put there, not what they put in the general definition.
No, but in marinas, the colon in marina.
If I could, Bob.
Yeah, go ahead.
I read the definition that's in our bylaws of marina. I read it out, every word of them, and that requires it be on water by your own admission. And so you are going to 240-55 and you're saying that under B, and we just, I just read what marina means in our bylaws. And Mr. McGrath even said so. We go to the definition in the bylaws and it doesn't meet it. So you can't use that section.
Now, now my argument is that when you have.
I heard your argument and I think that all we're doing is saying it again and again.
No, but if it's a general argument, a general definition versus a specific gen, definition, the specific should.
No, that's not the way that works.
All right.
That's just not the way that works. You've tried it under 240-54, under F, and F doesn't fit. It doesn't, I mean, and, and here's the thing. In the zoning bylaws, you have under 240-54, a lot of things you can do in this particular zone. It's not like you're prohibited from doing anything. You can have a bank.
That's my point really, you know.
Serve food, you could have a restaurant on that site. I mean, you don't have to go through the whole list. But I think at some point you say, the board has to make the decision. You've presented the argument. Some of us have presented a different argument and then we make a decision.
Yeah, I, I hope though that, you know, uses, there's no, there's no statute of limitation for uses. So no matter how long ago someone might have started using the light industrial zone is boat storage, they're still not allowed to continue that. And I just, you know, I'd like you to consider the common sense and, and severity of a decision that says boat storage is not allowed in a light industrial zone.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's, let's turn it to public comment just to make sure there's no one out there and we can circle back in a minute. So if anyone out there has a question, comment or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon using the Zoom app and we will recognize you, elevate you shortly. All right, we do have someone. If we could please elevate Pete Langen. All right, welcome Pete. You've been elevated. All you need to do is unmute yourself and turn on your video. If you could just state your name for the record and your address and whatever question, comment or concern you might have.
How you doing?
Good.
Okay, I'd just like to say, I actually, I live over in Seacoast shores and I'm very familiar with the property. I've been by there many times and I, I just think it's extremely good place for boat storage. And I mean, I've been watching the whole meeting and I totally agree. There is, there is boat storage all along that section of Route 28. And it, it, it almost, without insulting anybody, it almost seems ridiculous that it wouldn't be allowed there. I understand everybody's argument that you're looking for, say, the actual technical thing to put your finger on, but I, I think it's just been an implied use. And I, I mean, there's hundreds of boats in that particular district. And I think that that spot is a phenomenal spot for it. Again, being over in Seacoast, I know here, the biggest problem everybody has is, you know, the farther away it is from this area because, you know, we do have Bosons Boat Ramp and the Town Ramp right down the street. But I think it's just a logical place for it. I understand, you know, you need something to kind of hang your hat on. But I, I agree with what Paul's saying as far as, you know, a marina, they simply, you can't put a marina in an LIA district because it's not there, it doesn't exist. So I think it was implied that, that the marina aspect is allowed. And I, I understand we're splitting hairs as far as the details go, but I, I just think I'm, I'm all for the project and I, I think it totally makes sense.
Appreciate your comments tonight, Mr. Langen. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would it change somebody's mind if I went through the record on these existing light industrial uses already and, and found a building permit or found a, a founder's ZBA decision? I, I didn't do that. We didn't, I thought about that, studying it and, and seeing if there actually was a decision on any of these. But if you accept the argument that it's allowed use, there wouldn't be any ZBA decisions. You know, it just would have been the building, building department, maybe going out. But if you accept it's allowed use, it wouldn't be a ZBA decision. Perhaps we could find a, a building permit on some of the properties. Would, would that change anybody's mind?
All right. So let's do this, Attorney Glenn. Let's, let's turn it to board discussion right now, just to try to, you know, kind of poll the board, get an understanding of where everyone is.
I'd just like to ask one more question if I could.
Go ahead, Ken.
To either Mr. Glenn or Mr. Khan, would you characterize what you're doing as a service?
Sure. Yes. I mean, it's a service. Yeah.
I absolutely think it's a service. I mean, right now you have people up and down Seacoast shores, where I am in the summer, up and down Central, Davisville, Acapescot, Mare Vista, they all have boats. Not all, but a lot of them have boats. They don't know what to do with them. So they have these lawn ornaments covered in white and they're looking for somebody that can haul their boat out of the water as a service and store it as a service in a location that's secure, that's, you know, accessible if needed. And, you know, very close by. I mean, people in the winter.
And where do people store their boats when they don't store them with you?
So currently, if you drive around East Falmouth, they're in every third driveway.
So, so in a way, you're providing a household service. You're getting the boat off of their property and on to, you know, a centralized location.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, you know, this, I want to, I mean, we straight into debate, discussion, we really, this portion of the process really should be about questions. So you've answered my question and I'll make my arguments when we come to board discussion.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ken. Any last questions for the applicant? Before we turn it to board discussion, just to try to figure out where we're heading here as a board. All right, nothing for right now. Well, we're keeping the hearing open, but we will have some board discussion. See, Ken, did you want to start us off?
Oh, sure.
I saw you heading in one direction there. So why don't you?
Well, first of all.
Why don't you flush out your ideas?
I think we've gotten kind of stuck on this red herring. I, I think that the argument that it's a marina is totally wrong. It's not a marina. Marina is clearly defined in the bylaw. It's not near water. It doesn't do any of the services that marinas do. But I also think we're making a mistake by excluding this as a possible use because boatyards and marinas are not the same thing. And, you know, I take my boat to be repaired at a boatyard or to be stored at a boatyard. It's nowhere near the water. You know, so I think we cannot, you know, meet the test that the planning board is asking us to meet under 240-55B. It just doesn't work. It's not a marine. But I think we can under 240-54, which is permitted business, commercial and industrial uses because we, it is a service, which is covered by 240-54C. And I think Mr. Glenn does make a good point. Boatyards are allowed under section F here by implication because they're excluded from the limitations that many other uses within section F are subject to. So if you're excluding something from limitation, it's clearly by implication it's allowed. I think most of the people, probably everyone on the board, would agree that it's a perfectly fine use for the location and the site. The problem does not rest with the project. It rests with the poor structure and writing and a lack of clarity in the bylaw itself. And I, I would hate to see us penalize an applicant when we can, if we, you know, exercise a little bit of discretion here, interpret this bylaw and then we really ought to tell the planning board to clear it up. Because it's absolutely correct. This is a boating community. There are boatyards all over the place. There needs to be a place to put boats. It's a need. And I think, you know, again, by, by, just with a little bit of discretion here under 2, 240-54, we can find a way to make this work.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Anyone else want to chime in? Ed, how do you feel?
I think that it's a good use. There's already a storage on both sides of that property. There's one down by the post office. And it's a definite need, you know, clean up some of the streets, the driveways and the houses throughout town. I think we should find a way to go make this happen. We need to fix the bylaws. We need to get them fixed.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Scott, how do you feel?
Don't we fix these bylaws through town meeting?
We do.
I just.
That would be your preference, Scott?
Well, you know, I can't get by the fact that, you know, we cite pre-existing non-conforming examples for why we should do this. I think that they could have been a little more creative in the way they proposed this. I get it. We're a boating community. But what kind of precedent does it set when it doesn't meet anything? And we're just creating a reason to do it.
So you're, you're not buying Ken's argument?
Listen, Ken's a very intelligent man and I'm sure he's got, you know, he's got reasons and, and, and logic behind it. But when you look at, when you look at the bylaw and you look at, you know, Mr. McGrath, you know, cited the definition of a boatyard, but he didn't cite the definition of a marina as an example. And if you do that, it discounts his argument. So, you know, it's like this, which, so, I mean, that's where I'm at with it. I, I, I do like the project, but it doesn't fit the bill to me.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Bob, how do you feel?
Well, I feel the same way as Scott. I think it would be a good project and I think it's a good spot for it. But, you know, Ed mentioned storage near the post office, which quite frankly, I don't think that's even allowed. So I don't like using examples that don't have permits and may be doing businesses in violation. And the application has applied under 240-54, 240-55. You know, we can pretty much say it doesn't meet 240-55. Planning board referral says that. There are comments from town council and there are comments from the building commissioner. The current building commissioner say that. I think it's very creative to say it's a household use. My definition of household use may be different. I think it's something specifically having to do with an individual household on that location. I just don't think this complies. And I, I think it's a good change to put in the bylaws. And unfortunately, we all know how long that takes time-wise, but at this point, they. But at this point, they should put a definition of what a boatyard is. They should then put it in the, you know, bylaw referrals that they want it in, you know, so we, we don't get into these. I, I mentioned before, I think there might have been some light industrial area around Falmouth Harbor that they actually changed it to a marine district because they didn't like the idea that it was, you know, that it was light industrial. But I don't think, I think it's a good project. I have nothing here to base it on and I'm not going to go out on a limb just with that one exemption. Saying that because there's a reference to employment on a boatyard or fabrication, that this is an absolute allowed use. So, um, I couldn't vote in favor with it, with, you know, with the current references that are in here.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Chairman, the one other I did cite also, um, 56E, 57E, a special permit, which, um, so that wouldn't be an allowed use. But there's a special permit use that lets you, gives you broad authority, really broad authority. Instances compatible with the uses mentioned above.
And which, which bylaws are that, Attorney Glenn? I'm sorry. I didn't quite catch that.
It's 24057E. It's, it's part of the application, the special permit application. My use memo dealt with an allowed use. My argument is this is an allowed use, but the special permit that we're looking for, I, I referred to 24057E, which if you like the project, you, you have all the authority in the, the world in that thing. Anything compatible with the uses mentioned above, which is everything. You know, isn't it compatible? It, it just seems to be, be perfect. So that would be a special permit rather than just a finding about use. But that's, that's the application too. You know, and, and if you're on the fence about, you know what, you know, I, I think it's clear, but you just, some people disagree with me. If you're on the fence with that, the, the authority is there in, in E to give a special permit in this situation. And all, all the special permits you give, if, if there's any one that makes sense, this, this one would. You know, the, the, where I argue that it's an allowed use is not part of the special permit application. If you know what I mean. It's my argument that we, we're here only because, um, there are pre, there are more than one dwelling per lot on it. And that's why we need the special permit. That's my argument in the use memo. But you can also grant the special permit under E there.
Okay, but so, so, so under E, if we do that 240-57, so the uses under E must be compatible with the uses listed above. Which means it has to be compatible with multifamily, television, private clubs, commercial accommodations.
Well, the whole section, the, the whole section is.
Yeah, but so 24057 says uses allowed by specialment for the board of appeals. It lists some very specific ones. E, which you're trying to fall under because I don't think any of the other ones do, is the blacksmith, builder, carpenter, mason, plumber, roofer, tinsmith, undertaker and similar uses, which the board of appeals may in specific instances find to be compatible with the uses mentioned above. So the uses mentioned above would be 24056. Taking of borders, a home occupation, a portable woodworking mill.
I'd say it's all the uses in 240.
Or, or, or manufactured, altered, finished, assembled, outsourced, such accessory. And, and then the outs, it does mention an outside storage, but that has to be an accessory use. It can't be a primary.
That gives you all the authority you need.
Yeah, but this is a, but this is a primary use, correct? The boat storage?
Above is the whole section, not the, the, the very, the one right before.
So under the 24057, which one are you saying gives us the authority?
E.
So E says, the last sentence, it's in specific instances, but it has to be compatible with the uses mentioned above, which refers back to 56, which are accessory uses. A taking of borders, a home occupation, television or portable woodworking mills.
Above is the whole section, not just that.
It says, it doesn't say above. It says uses above.
Yeah.
Section 57 are special permitted uses. 56 is permitted accessory. Even if you use the uses above, it's not a commercial accommodation. It's not multifamily. It's not a private club. Those are the only ones listed above.
See, I, I disagree. Above is the whole section. I'm just, you know, I, I mean, if you, if you really want to deny something, you could interpret it that way. But the uses above are the whole section.
So the whole, so the whole section of 57?
I think he's trying to tell you that the uses start back at 54 for the district. I think that's what he's trying to reference.
Permitted uses. Yeah, it's the whole section, not, not just that particular paragraph. The above is the whole section.
Can I, you know, if, uh, maybe TJ, what the question ought to be, how many people here think it's a good project apart from the structure of the bylaw? Because I think we're getting hung up on a literal interpretation of the bylaw, which is not well enough written. And so I, I do believe if we, if we think it's a good project and there's plenty of evidence that uses like this are occurring in industrial districts, we ought to be looking for a way to interpret the bylaw that makes it work as long as it's not explicitly prohibited, which I don't believe that it is. I agree that the marina is, it's not a marina. We cannot approve it under that criteria. But it is a boatyard. It is used for storage. Uh, and that is mentioned explicitly. And so if we combine that, if we combine that logic with this flexibility that, uh, we can, you know, if it's compatible with these uses, starting with 25, uh, 24054 and going on down, I think there's enough latitude for us to approve this and, and not, not be totally off base.
Thank you, Ken. Mary?
Yeah, um, I think it's a wonderful idea. I think there's a need in the community for this kind of thing. The reading of the bylaws, we, in my opinion, we cannot make a decision based on the fact that we like a project and not look at the zoning bylaws. And I have read them more than a few times and they just don't, this doesn't fit. Whether it was done correctly or not, we are not town meeting. We cannot make decisions and write our own bylaws because there's nothing in here that says that the ZBA has the authority to decide a good project can be approved without having it in the zoning bylaws. And it isn't there. It just isn't there.
I think the town counts on the ZBA to make decisions.
Excuse me, but I have the floor and I'd like to talk.
Go ahead, Mary.
And I think that people need to be respectful because I hadn't finished.
Sorry. Yep.
If, if you are hired to, to get approval of a project, you're going to be on the side of the applicant. And I think that's wonderful. But I am on the side of looking at the zoning bylaws as they currently exist and protecting the town. And my read of that is you can't do that. And I could nitpick all sorts of words in any bylaw in any town and come up with an argument. But unfortunately it isn't here. And I feel for, for the applicant because they've done a lot of work. But somebody should have been truthful and say it isn't in the bylaws. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mary. James, do you have anything? I don't know if we've heard from you yet.
I, I agree. I think this is an excellent project. I think it's in the right spot. I think that the plans that Mr. McGrath has submitted are certainly appropriate. And I, Mr. Glenn's argument, I, I would agree that, I think that this is something that should be included in a light industrial zone use. I, I am going to play devil's advocate though and say that it wasn't included. It was not put into, whether it was intentional or not, and I don't want to speculate. This could have been deliberately omitted when this bylaw was written, that people did not want this use being, uh, included in a light industrial. My personal feeling is I think that we should take it back to town, town meeting and have the, the bylaw changed to specifically include this use. And I'd be happy at that point to devote yes. What's kind of got me a little hung up is that I don't, I disagree with Ken. I don't think this is a boatyard. It's just storage. If the applicant was going to be selling boats, fixing boats, servicing boats in addition to this, and those were all going to be primary activities going on, I would agree that this is a boatyard. It should be, would be permitted, but this is just storage at this point. That's what I'm a, a little hung up on. So I, I, I'm not voting, so you don't have to worry about me. Um, but I would be leaning towards denial if I was really just on statutory construction. I, otherwise I would be voting yes. I think it's a great project. Mr. Khan, I absolutely agree. This is needed in Falmouth. We're just, I think we're saddled and restrained at this point with a poorly written bylaw that doesn't give us the authority to, to grant it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, James. And with, with your words, I'll, I'll just agree with James 100%. I think it's a fantastic project. I think everyone's done a fantastic job presenting it. And, uh, I think it's an appropriate spot, but I, I just can't get there. No matter which way you go with the bylaws, I, I just can't get there to approving it. And I, I really do think, uh, that it, that it's just storage. I, I can't get there as a boatyard.
TJ, if, if, if we're not going to, I would vote for this. And by the way, just to address James's point, boatyards and buildings thereon, which certainly include.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
But Ken, let's, let's have Ken finish this.
If we're not going to vote for this, uh, we don't want to, we don't want to deny it. If we believe it's a good project and have them not be able to come back, what we want to do is somehow, you know, is have them, I guess, withdraw until the bylaw can be changed appropriately.
And if Mr. Glenn could come back with something, as he indicated, that find a decision, I think reconsideration might be appropriate at that time, but as well.
Could I ask, uh, make another suggestion? Um, there. So we, we were looking for the least intense use possible. Okay. We weren't looking to make this more intense. It would be no problem turning it into a service center as well. We probably need some more, um, more engineering work done to justify that. But we can definitely turn it into a boatyard and service the boats up there. I mean, Alex had been talking about that. He said, well, we applied as a, originally as a boat storage facility. That's a less intense use, but we can certainly do the more intense use on it at this location. Does, does that change people's, um, mind at all?
Well, let, let me ask you this, Attorney Glenn, since, since you're presenting that is, was the intent just to have it as storage? Or was there any sort of intent to have work done on the boats while, while they're on site? Mr. Or, I think he can speak to that.
I think it's a good idea to just kind of start off how this whole process began. So, um, over the last six years, um, my friend and I, we've been building pontoon party boats. And, uh, we use them and then we sell them. We sold one to the owner of Boat Works, which is just down the road. Another one to a gentleman in Osterville, um, currently using one now. And they are, um, as my friend's wife calls them, the biggest lawn ornaments ever because we're building them on their driveway. So I'm like, well, this is perfect because there's a property, uh, that my wife's family owns, will lease it. And what we'll do is we'll build the boats indoors. Nobody will see it. It's, it's behind. No, no one's going to bother. And then, uh, have it big enough that, um, we could, um, have people who have been contacting me, uh, saying, hey, can we, can we store it there too? And so that's how the whole thing started. And then I, I'm talking to, um, one of the marinas in East Falmouth who said, oh my God, like this is, I, I need this. And, and I said, well, hold off though. I don't want to have any work done on the boat because, you know, you, you don't want to, it's, it's my wife's family's land. You don't want to, you know, you know, do any kind of work to it. Uh, but maybe we'll just do storage. That's kind of how the whole thing started. Now certainly, um, they can do electrical work because there's a need for that. Uh, you know, electronics go as anybody owns a boat, it's a 50/50 when you turn something on uh, in May or, or June, if it's going to work. So there's electrical work that you've done. There's certainly going to be shrink wrap, uh, being done. Uh, usually upholstery, uh, is done, but I didn't want any mechanical, uh, work. No, nothing to do with engines because it's just, it's just a nice area. And I, I wouldn't want to have any, even, I don't want to have, um, any power washing done. So that would all be done offsite. And then you bring it there to do the shrink wrap and, and the work. And, uh, and again, there's boat haulers that want to expand their business to be able to offer boat storage. There's marinas that are looking, uh, you know, right now they're, they're actually driving them all the way down by the dump, even though that's light industry where they're keeping it there. And, you know, these roads in Falmouth, you, you're meandering around and there's trees coming down and you, you're, I've seen people with fences, with, um, brooms like pushing, pushing, uh, you know, twigs up so they don't, you know, scratch the boat and stuff. So there are nine boat ramps within a three mile radius of this spot. I mean, it's, it's so perfect and there's no trees. The power lines are above 136, which is, you know, federal or sorry, state, I think it's, it's federal. And so that's how, that's the origin of this. So the, the goal was to try and do, as, as Paul said, the least impact. Place where I can build my, my pontoon boats without getting yelled at by my buddy's wife. A, uh, a place where, you know, friends can keep their, their boats. And also, um, places where, uh, small businesses, particularly boat haulers, uh, and, and local marinas can keep their boats. Because if you look at some of these marinas, there's huge fingers of, of boats, but their properties are tiny. So they have to go somewhere. So where are they right now? They're on light industry, B2, or every third house on Seaco, Central, Acapescot, Davisville, uh, and so forth. So that's kind of the whole origin. I, I think that, I think it's fair to give you why I'm doing this.
So, all right.
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Ken. Sorry. I just want to hear from Ken.
Does that mean, Mr. Khan, that you would be, uh, fabricating or manufacturing or fitting or assembling?
Oh, yeah.
Well, under the bylaw, again, section 24054F, all of that stuff is allowed. And the only thing that's mentioned in the bylaw with respect to boatyards is that they don't have the same limitations in terms of the size of the building or the amount of square feet per person required for other uses. It does however, say that boatyard, I mean, by implication, I, I, you know, I do agree with Paul. By implication, if boatyards are excluded from those limitations, they must therefore be allowed.
Mr. Chairman, would, would it be okay for us to amend our application? I, I, it's hard to advise people sometimes, you know, you read things and everybody has different opinion. I've always thought, well, the less intensive use is more likely to get approved. He, he would love to do boat building. They say, well, that, you know, don't come up with that now. That, that's a project later on. Does that change anybody's mind if we change our, um, and, and it's a little more intense and we'd have to maybe change the building around and change the area around to make sure we could deal with that? But that seems to be pretty clear. You know, I, I, I just, I'm surprised. I, I thought the boat storage was pretty clearly, but I was wrong in that. Obviously there's disagreement. But would that change people's mind, um, if, if we came in and we turned it into a boatyard? And we manufactured some boats there, um, as well.
So, Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I, I think changing something on, amending like this on the fly and trying to come up with reasons is just risky. The, you know, you're also going to have to deal with the town plan or town council, building commission, everyone else to chime in on this. And I'm not telling the applicant what to do, but I would think the safe. And I'm not telling the applicant what to do, but I would think the safer bet. Would to be withdraw without prejudice. Figure out what kind of changes are going to be done, run it by. The people that are going to eventually be involved to say yes or no. And when if you're getting a consensus at that point, that it looks like you fall under something on the bylaw. You just reapply and you're not held off for so many years versus just a withdrawal. And I'm going back to the referrals we get. That referral stated there were discussions with the building commissioner and town council. And. I would think it would be to your benefit to make sure some of those people. Are in somewhat agreement. Because we may have to refer to town council. Or we may have to refer to someone else and we're going to get another referral in from planning and all these other people again. And if they don't. Change their position whatsoever. It's not just us. You're going to have to do a site plan review. You may be back in the same boat again.
Well, I, I'd, I'd ask to withdraw for now and do that. Um, nobody has discussed this issue more than we have tonight and more than Alex did before tonight. You, you know, I mean, we, we really discussed this. And, I mean, we could, we'll just have to go with that F. Permitted business uses and any can do that. Um, there, it'd be a little more intense and we have to make the project a little better probably to comply. With any type of, um, that, but. Um, would, would, that would hopefully, and I can talk to the building commissioner. Beforehand to see if that would work. Going to town meeting, I have great faith in town meeting to always do the right thing. But I, I'm not sure they can do it within a.
And that's, and that's, and that's a long process. It just, then when you come back, we're going to get referrals from the same departments again. And if you get the same referrals that we have now, it just makes it difficult. So if that's the way they want to go. Then I would make a motion to accept applicants withdrawal without prejudice.
Second.
Very good. All right. So there is a motion on, uh, to. Withdraw without prejudice or to accept the applicant's withdrawal without prejudice made by Bob. Seconded by Ken. Roll call vote once again. Ed?
Thank you.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
Scott?
I.
And TJ Hari, I. Passes unanimously. Attorney Glenn and, uh, Mr. McGrath, Mr. Khan, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Hope to see you back here soon.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
All right. So that does it for our public hearings. We're on to our open meeting items. We first have voting the minutes. March fourth and March eleventh, we will table, uh, March eleventh. As far as.
I'll make a motion to accept. The minutes as written for. May fourth, two thousand twenty-one minute meeting.
Thank you, Ed. Is there a second?
I will second March fourth.
All right. Thank you, Bob. So, uh, roll call vote again. Ed?
Thank you, Karen, I.
James?
James Moore's side.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
Scott?
That's on Sky.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
And TJ Hari, I. The minutes pass unanimously and we're tabling the eleventh. Board discussion. Is there anything?
I guess, uh. We ought to send a note to the planning board that they need to fix that bylaw.
Yes.
Soon.
All right. Anything else for, uh, board discussion? Board updates? Are there any future agenda items? All right. Seeing none. Our next meeting is April eighth. I think that gives us a week or two off, right? It does. All right. Everyone rest up. We'll see you back here in two weeks.
Good night, everyone.